We'll begin. Welcome everyone to the Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. Before we begin with our agenda, please join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Planer Matthew Colado for the items recommended for adjournment this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready prepared at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes in Wisconsin. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, 2010-06 KBC Holdings. Under waiver requests, number four, 773 Scholar Estates Comac. Number five, number 1135 Toomey Platt St. James. And number six, 911A Glen Hill Northern St. James.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on any of the matters recommended to be recessed? Sir, please come forward and state your name and which item on the agenda.
My name is Robert Soto. I live at 59 Jeremy Cycle in Wisconsin. Item number one, Storybook Homes in Wisconsin. This is dated June 2012.
That's correct.
Why is this still on here? Why does it recur?
This is a matter that is not the one in Wisconsin, but I believe is in off of Lake Avenue in St. James. Mr. Flynn, our Planning Director, could give you a brief synopsis of what this proposal entails.
This one is on Lake Avenue, but it's in Wisconsin, pretty close to the Fire Department substation. Their building in the back there. This is before I went to Planning Board meetings on a regular basis. I wasn't at the hearing, but this is a petition to the Town Board to change the zone, to permit garden apartments instead of single-family homes and perhaps offices. Under the zoning ordinance, there's a procedure that before the Town Board can change the zoning, they have to get a recommendation from the Planning Board. And the Planning Board held a hearing on this petition, and it's my understanding that there was a lot of opposition. The Planning Board, from my understanding, said that they wanted to adjourn it, and I believe directed the previous Planning Director to either meet with the residents or with the developer, I'm not sure which. But when he retired, when that Director retired, and before I became the Director, he briefed me on the status of everything, and I believe he said this was sort of in the dead letter file. So I'm not sure, you know.
Yeah, the applicant is not pursuing this.
But this is very unsettling. This keeps popping up, and he said there was no meaning. So maybe we should have a meeting and find out what we're going to do with this.
It was my intention to clean up some of these items that have been on the agenda for a long time. We have addressed several of these, and I would assume, you know, this is probably one that meets that criteria. We should find out from the applicant what their intentions are, if they wish to proceed, but there is nothing, we can't force them to go ahead on this. The only thing we could probably do is hold a public hearing and vote on the matter, but again, the applicant may decide to withdraw or change the nature of the application. So the ball is really in their court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on any of the matters recommended for adjournment?
May I ask a question?
Yes, but Jeff, please come forwards and state your name. And which item on this?
The first one again. My name is Peter Hanson. I live at 47 Eppes Pines Drive in Wisconsin. Real fast, the number of apartments is how many on this first item he's requesting?
From what memory serves me, reading this over a few years ago, it is not an exorbitant amount because of the size of the parcel involved, but Mr. Flynn, can you recollect?
I wasn't party to this. I'm not sure.
This is a matter that precedes my time, my tenure on the Board, so I'm not familiar, but it is something that, as you say, has appeared on the agenda since that time.
Well, the number would be, the number of apartments that, what that would refer to this would be very important. I mean, the traffic, Lake Avenue, Smithtown Boulevard, is already rated an F. Can't be worse. So anything that's-
I understand your concerns, and I think the fact that probably this has languished on the agenda demonstrates maybe it doesn't have the public support or it's not feasible. So again, I can't prejudge this, but I know it is something, maybe we should contact the applicant and see what their intentions are.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the matters recommended for adjournment? If there being none, do I have a motion to adjourn these items?
Motion to recess items one through six as read.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. The matters are recessed. Next item on the agenda is under new hearings and decisions, the extension of preliminary approval for Richwood Estates in Hop Dog.
The applicant requests an extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates. The preliminary map of number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates was granted preliminary approval by the Planning Board on November 18, 2015. The preliminary approval is valid for a period of 180 days that expired on May 18, 2016. Since that date, this application has received two 90-day extensions and two six-month extensions, which expired on November 18, 2017. The applicant submitted the request for the extension on November 13, 2017. The applicant states that they have yet to obtain a road opening permit from the Town of Islip and have accepted an offer from Suffolk County to purchase the property for open space. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has no objection to an extension and recommends a time period of six months. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Extension of Conditional Preliminary Approval for Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request to extend the conditional preliminary approval for Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates now therefore be at first resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates beginning November 18, 2017 to May 18, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Yulie Viola for the applicant, Sir Tillman Ballen, 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York, 11788. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members.
Do you have the affidavit of posting?
Yes, I do. Along with the pictures.
Could you just spell your name for the stenographer?
Sure, it's Y-U-L-I-Y-A. And the last name is Vilak Victor I-O-L-A.
Thank you.
As you may recall, on November 18, 2015, the Planning Board adopted resolution granting a conditional preliminary map approval for the subdivision known as a Map of Richwood Estates. At this time, we are requesting an extension of that approval due to the fact that we are currently waiting for the legislative approval of the contract of sale between the Suffolk County and the purchaser for the subject property. And we are hoping that we should be able to get this approval soon so that the county and the purchaser can move forward with the contract and close on the property.
Okay, you've heard the report of the Planning Board, and I gather you are in agreement.
Yes, we're in agreement with the staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Sanders. I live at 370 Ridgefield Road in Hop Dog. I'm right up the block from the house that Mr. Nealon purchased that they were looking to initially knock down to put in the property. So it's our understan-- I'm here on the behalf of the Northwood Woodfield Woods Civic Association. So it's our understanding that the purchase is pretty much trying to go through with the Suffolk County to purchase the property. So I know that Smithtown Township still had never given the approval, and what we're trying to find out is because we're getting mixed between the Town of Smithtown and the Town of Islip about the approvals that the Town of Smithtown is going to give, or rather the Town of Islip is still trying to get the permit to knock the house down and put the road through, and that Suffolk County is only going to approve to purchase the property if they get the approval to put the roadway in. So that's what we're kind of confused about. Why are they still pushing to get the roadway put in? If the county's going to buy it, they don't need another road to get in. They can get in off of that highway, and it's going to be park property. So that's where the confusion is.
The road part of it is with the Town of Islip, if I recall correctly. This is one of those properties that was in both towns. And the part dealing with the road, they had to go to the Town of Islip to get the road opening permit. We gave a, I think it was a preliminary approval, and as she just indicated, apparently the applicant is in contract with the county, and the county legislature has to approve it. But anything relating to the road opening permit is with the Town of Islip, and that's not really us.
Right, okay. And there's another very serious problem, which I was going to call Mr. Nealon because I knew who he is. There's a lot of illegal hunting going on in that property right now, and if you could just request of Mr. Nealon to just see if he can have somebody post the property, because we're calling the police now, because there's about 17 deer that live in the area there. People are actively shooting with guns back there. Now, it's between park property, and it's between town property and so forth. So is there any way that the town can also go in there and post the property so there's no hunting? Because when the police are coming in, they can't arrest anybody because they don't know who owns the property, and someone's going to get killed.
Well, I don't think we're allowed, the town's allowed just to go on private property without a sign.
Well, no, I'm just asking them for you guys to go onto the property that belongs to you.
But I think if you called the police, you've done the right thing, because those are the people who can, you know.
But the thing is, like, we asked them, if you come in, can you arrest these people? And they said, we don't know who owns the property, but they're still discharging a weapon within 1,000 feet of a domicile, which is illegal. And they keep telling us that, well, if the person runs onto the other property, we can't win it without a warrant. So that's why I'm just asking if there's any way, because the Town of Smithtown already owns the property behind the bank that goes across from the condos that's on--
The town doesn't own this property. The applicant owns it, and they're trying to sell it to Suffolk County.
Right, 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 I know that.
If that happens, then the police will know who owns it.
Yeah, all right.
Suggestion one, either I could do it for you or call the Town Parks Department and see if they can. They'll probably check with the Town Attorney's Office to see if they're allowed to do it.
Because like I said, because there's five different estates in there, five different orders.
Maybe they could contact the applicant and get permission from the applicant to go do it and then go do it.
Yeah.
That would help the problem.
Yeah, well, the only part I'm asking you folks to try to do is, Smithtown owns the land that comes out next to those five houses across from the Lakes and Honey Hollow, the condos. And that land goes across and it goes behind the bank of Smith, the bank on the corner there, and that place that has the plumbing supply. So that's the only thing where I'm asking of the Town of Smithtown is, could we just post in there? Because it is park property, that it is park property, because there used to be signs there, and they're gone, so can we just get that posted that says no hunting? So at least when we call the police, they come over, they say, oh, you're on park property, we're going to arrest you. That's all we're asking.
I will ask the Parks Director if he could post the town park.
That would be great.
That we can take care of if they'll do it, because it's town property, but the other property is private property.
Right, right. Like I said, I'm going to call Rick and ask him to post his, and the other parcel that was sold to the county.
Maybe working together we'll sell it.
And the branch, right. We're just trying to stop them, something before something real bad happens. Thank you.
Yes, and we will definitely address the issue with the property owner of illegal hunting, and will take some steps to remediate the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The order's not causing the problem, just, you know.
We understand.
We're all just looking to help.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed, and on the resolution itself.
In the matter of Number 1057.1 Map of Richwood Estates, a move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the extension of conditional preliminary approval is Next item on the agenda is Country Point Woods at Smithtown. It's another condition of final approval.
For this matter, the sign had the wrong date on it, so it needs to be re-advertised for the January meeting.
All right. So we have a motion to--
January 10th.
January--
January 10th.
Yes, whatever.
January 10th?
Yep, yes. Recession to January 10th?
In the matter of Number 1167 Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, move that we recess this matter to the January 10, 2018 meeting of this board.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. The hearing is recessed. The next item on the agenda is a performance bond extension for Richards Homes on Cambon Avenue in St. James.
The request is to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes for a period of two years to expire on January 22, 2019. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on November 5, 2008. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $22,925 was approved by the Board and subsequently signed by the Chairman. The Town Board accepted the bond on January 22, 2009. The approved performance period of the performance bond expired on January 22, 2017. The applicant has indicated that they need more time in order to complete the necessary improvements on the bond. One house has been completed, and the second house is under construction. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department has no objection to the request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Extension of Performance Period of the Performance Bond, Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of the Canio Management Corp. to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes for a period of two years. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Number 1120 Map of Richard Homes for a period of two years to expire on January 22, 2019.
Okay, is the applicant or is Representative present? No? Anybody on the, from the public wish to be heard on this matter? There being none, I guess we can extend the performance bond. It's not a major issue.
I don't see any reason why--
I spoke to him on the phone today. I don't know why he's not here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason why we just couldn't go ahead and extend it.
Okay, do we have a motion to close the hearing and adopt?
In the matter of Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I move that we close the public hearing.
Well, the affidavit of posting wasn't submitted, actually, so.
Ah, then we cannot do that, then.
Okay, you withdraw your motion, and we have a motion to recess until January 10?
Mm-hmm. In the matter of Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I move that we recess the public hearing to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second. All those in favor? I. Motion carries. The item is recessed until January 10.
I guess the same for the next?
Yep.
Archer Hills, Council has--
No, it's the waiver request.
Oh, the waiver.
Well, I would address Archer Hills first.
For Archer Hills, we have a letter requesting adjournment until January, or did they give us a, they not give us a date certain?
Was there anything in that letter that was sent?
No, it just says January.
It just says January, so I would assume then that we--
January 10.
The person who wrote the letter is here, so maybe you could ask him.
We certainly can. Okay, motion to recess till January 10 for Archer Hills.
For Archer Hills, okay.
Number 10.
Number 10, okay. In the matter of Number 299, Archer Hills in Smithtown, I move that we recess the public hearing to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. The item is recessed until January 10. Next item on the agenda is the companion resolution for Richards Homes in St. James, waiving of sidewalks. There being no affidavit of posting, we have nothing on that, so I would assume recessing is appropriate.
In the matter of Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I move that we close the, that we recess the public hearing to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. The item is recessed until January 10. Next item on the agenda is Laura Park in Wisconsin, and we have a letter which came in within the last few days requesting adjournment, as counsel is, says he's not available to be present here this evening. We do have folks in the audience. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter, since you have came forward?
James Boukless, B-O-U-K-L-A-S, 66 Nichols Road in Wisconsin, New York. Good evening. I'm here representing the Wisconsin Civic Association. I'm personally unfamiliar with the Laura Park project. Could you please describe it for those of us in attendance?
Pardon me?
Could you please describe the project?
You said you were, were you, or were not?
I'm not, yes.
Oh, I thought you said you were.
I'm sorry.
Do you have the--
Yeah, so there's a subdivision that had two conditions on it. It's a Laura Court in Wisconsin. Let me just pull the map out. And there are two conditions placed on the filed map and filed covenants restrictions that limited the access to one of the lots, to Southern Boulevard only. That is lot number three, the most southern one. They were limited access to Southern Boulevard only, not Laura Court. The second one was putting a fence. They could not put a fence, I believe the wording is not west of a line, 220 feet from the front yard, property line along Southern Boulevard. So they placed a fence within that area, and they have a curb cut on Laura Court. So the applicant submitted a waiver looking to waive those two conditions. However, there was a clause that said that you need consent from the neighbors within that subdivision and the Planning Board, and they have not obtained consent from the neighbors, so that's why we're here.
Are you an attorney, sir?
I am.
Okay, so you're representing a group of homeowners or an association? Just going to make a suggestion, it's up to you. You can contact the Planning Department staff, and then you can go through the entire application in detail, read the memos, and really bring yourself up to speed in much more detail than we can give you at this meeting.
Absolutely. I saw it on the agenda tonight. I thought perhaps someone else in the Civic Association is aware, and because they weren't, I figured that I would ask the question.
No, that's fine, but just so you know, there's a request by, in writing, by the attorney for the applicant to adjourn the matter. So if that request is granted, and he's not here, he wrote a letter, nothing substantive is going to happen tonight, so you'll have time to bring yourself up to speed on it.
Thank you. And just a procedural point, it's the first time I've ever been here, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment. Will we have an opportunity to address other issues on the agenda or to ask the items to be placed on the agenda at some point?
Well, if there's an item on the agenda, you're certainly welcome to comment upon that at that time. However, unlike the Town Board, we don't have a public portion where people can come up and speak on any matter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And would you like to address this? Please come forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna Minay, Laura Park. Minay, Donna Minay. I know last time we met--
Can you just give your address?
Oh, 21 Laura Court, Wisconsin, New York.
Thank you.
I know last time we met, you said that there would no longer be any adjournments, and that this would be resolved today. I'm really hoping that we can get this done today. We've made another, we met with Mr. Zolo again yesterday, and we told him, we put in writing that he can keep the fence where it is, the curb cut in the driveway have to go. There's nothing else to discuss at this point. There really isn't. The covenant restrictions should be enforced, and I'm hoping you do that tonight.
Unfortunately, as a courtesy, we normally, when someone asks a matter to be recessed, I had hoped that we would conclude this matter this evening, and I was a little bit concerned when I saw the letter requesting another, yet another adjournment.
Yeah.
But I would like to let the planning staff notify the applicant and Mr. Zolo that this will be the final adjournment if it is granted.
How so?
And if Mr. Zolo is unable to appear, or he should perhaps find co-counsel or whatever to represent the applicant on this matter.
I think that's fair, that way he's on notice, everybody's on notice, and if something comes up, he has to make arrangements to get someone else here or take someone else to cover what else he has.
Okay, fair enough.
Again, my apologies for this. I share your concerns, and I was hoping we could conclude this matter.
Yeah, I was hoping, okay.
I think he did make an effort on, an effort was made on his part to--
Don't ask me.
--contact and obtain agreement. I don't see that has happened, so I think we have to, you know, vote on this.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's proceed--
We'll have to finish what we have here. My name is Fred Glock, G-L-O-C-K.
What are you here for?
Same one. The same one.
Okay.
Fred Glock, G-L-O-C-K, 19 Laura Court in Wisconsin, known as Lot 5 of Laura Park. I'm the homeowner. January--
Excuse me one second, we have an interruption here. Okay, continue.
Come January, we have a new town supervisor. I just have a question to ask as far as the board members. Are we going to have new board members on the board, or are all the members going to remain the same?
That you would have to ask members of the Town Board. They, by state law, they appoint members of the Planning Board, and I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you what's in store for anyone, so you'd best proceed by asking them.
We can give you some of what the procedure is. There are five members on this board. Each member has a five-year term. Each person's term expires in one year. So in January, the term of one of the members of the board will expire, and then it'll be up to the Town Board as to whether to reappoint that particular member whose term expires or appoint someone else in that person's place. That will be in January, they can make that decision. They don't make the decision right away. The person remains on the board as what they call a holdover. But, so each year, there's one person that can change.
So you'll have four of us here in January.
So you're stuck with at least four of us.
That's good, because come January, I don't want to be facing a new board--
No, it doesn't work that way.
And then go through everything that I already submitted.
With, we got, we have five of us. We each have a five-year term, and it's, each person expires one year, so there's only one potential change each year. It could be the same five of us, or it could be four of us. It's up to the Town Board, though, not us.
Can I just add more information to?
Of course. Yes, please do.
I have paperwork on a decrease of our property values that I would like to present. There's several copies there.
Is there enough, want to give to the planning staff, too? Here you go.
Last year, the property at 20 Laura Court, known as Lot 5 of Laura Park, was placed on the market, the real estate market, on April 11 of 2016, and that was prior to any work being done at Laura Court. Okay, the listing price was $624,000 and $590,000. The house recently sold on, I believe it was August 18 of this year, and it sold for $540,000. Okay, the prior sale of that house was October 2 of 2006. The sale of that house at that time was $570,000. That's a $30,000 decrease in property value. So it's a $30,000 loss plus not taken into account for the market appreciation of that property. So the loss of that property is well in excess of $30,000 because of the work that Mr. Biden did down at the corner. I'd just like to present that.
Thank you for that.
Sir, is what you just said basically reflected in the document that you handed up as well?
Yes, it is.
So that the one that was given to the planning staff can be made part of the record?
Yes.
And then, and then if, should the applicant's attorney wish to review it and And then, and then if, should the applicant's attorney wish to review it and comment on it, he have an opportunity to do that?
Yes, the MLS number...
Since he's not here now.
The MLS number on the public record is 2843453. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, pursuant to the request of counsel for Laura Park, do we have a motion to recess this until January 10th? For the last, for the final time?
Yes, I agree. In the matter of number 818, map of Laura Park, I move that we recess the public hearing to the January 10th, 2018, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item is recessed. The next item on the agenda is a final subdivision, two-lot subdivision on Angelo's Platt in
The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a one-acre parcel into two single-family lots. The final map of number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt, is comprised of one tax lot that is rectangular in shape. There is an existing dwelling on the property that will be removed. The applicant proposes to construct two new dwellings. The site has 100 feet of frontage on Hobson Avenue and 55 feet of frontage on Heidi Court. The site is owned R-21. Land north of the site is owned R-10 and developed with single-family dwellings. Land to the south, east and west is owned R-21 and developed with single-family dwellings. Topography is largely level, elevation ranges from 131 feet to 133 feet above sea level. The depth of groundwater is greater than 10 feet and no problems are anticipated with regard to other environmental conditions. Proposal appears to comply with the standards of the Suffolk County Sanitary Code with respect to sewage flow and septic system design and location requirements. Proposed subdivision meets all the zoning requirements for the R-21 zoning district with the exception of lot area for Lot 1. Lot 1 will require variance from the planning board to reduce the minimum lot area from 21,780 square feet to 20,280 square feet. Lot 1 would have met the lot area requirement, but the applicant is offering to dedicate a 15-foot wide strip along Hobson Avenue to the town for road widening purposes. The planning board has the authority to grant such a variance pursuant to Section 322-3.4 of the zoning ordinance, and the planning department recommends approval for the following reasons. One, the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood; there will be no difference in appearance from the street, and the minimal reduction will not be visible to any of the surrounding properties. Two, the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved without obtaining an area variance if the applicant does not offer dedication of land for road widening purposes. This would give the applicant the adequate lot area to meet the zoning district requirement. However, the Hobson Avenue right-of-way ranges from 20 feet to 35 feet wide in front of this property, whereas the standard right-of-way width for a residential street is 50 feet. Proposed dedication benefits the public by facilitating future road widening. The benefits to the public outweighs the minimal reduction in lot area. Three, the variance is not substantial in that the proposed lot area is only 6% less than the zoning requires. Four, the variance would not create adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Pursuant to Section 248-31B2 of the subdivision regulations, a subdivision is required to be clustered because the soil on the property is classified as haven loam, a prime agricultural soil. Example of clusters that would be feasible on the site include: one, constructing two homes with 50-foot frontage each on Hobson Avenue and preserving the east half of the property; two, constructing a two-family dwelling; three, preserving land in the rear yards of the proposed dwellings with a conservation easement. The first two options would represent a change in the character of the neighborhood, however, creating a conservation easement in the rear yards of the properties would achieve the goal of preserving prime agricultural soil and would not change the character of the neighborhood. In order to comply with Section 248-31 of the subdivision regulations, the planning department recommends that a 50-foot wide conservation easement be placed along the common property line with 25 feet on Lot 1 and 25 feet on Lot 2. Structures except fences should not be permitted in this area, however, the property owners would be allowed to mow, landscape, and maintain the area. Hobson Avenue and Heidi Court are identified as residential access streets. There are no sidewalks on Hobson Avenue and Heidi Court, and it's unlikely that sidewalks will be necessary given the low traffic volume. Therefore, the planning department recommends the planning board waive the requirement of sidewalks on Hobson Avenue and Heidi Court. Chapter 248-24 of the subdivision regulations state that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least two acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the planning board determines on a case-by-case basis that a need for park land exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the town's comprehensive plan, there is a need for park land in the neighborhood in which this subdivision is situated. The subdivision's share of meeting the need is approximately .006 acres. In cases where the planning board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivider is required to pay cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location and small size of the subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the payment of an equivalent park fee established at $3,000 is recommended as a condition of final plat approval. The engineering department, highway department, and traffic safety department have found the subdivision acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways finds the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable. They recommend a secret negative declaration as well as conditions for approval. Further, one, letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the St. James Water District and PSCG. Two, the Smithtown Central School District has acknowledged this subdivision. Three, the amount of the inspection fee is estimated at $997. Four, the amount of the park fee is estimated at $3,000. Five, the amount of the performance bond is estimated at $12,462. Six, the amount of the cash deposit is estimated at $1,000. Seven, the amount of the performance bond to be posted is $11,462. Following resolution is recommended for number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt, Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017 recommends secret declaration, number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt. Whereas the planning board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issues a secret negative declaration determination of nonsignificance. The I.S. is not necessary in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Matthew Angelo's for Angelo's Platt, number 1176, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the state of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soils, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Frank S. Ferantello, licensed professional surveyor, and dated October 3rd, 2017, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities of the subject parcel. The planning department recommends approval and offers the following resolutions for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, final plat variance for number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Matthew Angelo's for the following variance on Lot 1 pursuant to Section 322-3.4 of the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board of the Town of Smithtown hereby grants a variance from the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt as follow, below is the table to be put on the map. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk, a fee of $500 is required for this variance. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, subdivision final approval, number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Matthew Angelo's to subdivide one acre into two lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the final plat of number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions. A, posting of a performance bond in the amount specified by separate resolution of the planning board and for a term of two years. B, posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown Subdivision Regulations. C, payment of an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the planning board. D, payment of an inspection, or, D, payment of a park fee of $3,000. E, final approval of the drainage and regrading plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. F, a 50-foot wide conservation easement shall be established along the common property line with 25 feet on Lot 1 and 25 feet on Lot 2. No structure shall be permitted in this area except fences. However, the property owners will be allowed to mow, landscape, and maintain the area. G, prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions. One, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be as indicated in the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Frank S. Ferantello, licensed professional surveyor dated October 3rd, 2017. Two, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by sighted fencing. Three, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. And four, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities of the subject parcel. Second resolve that the chairman of the planning board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the town board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. Third resolve that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 62 days after the chairman of the planning board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, authorization to sign performance bond estimate, number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt. Whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, highway, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all required public improvements, now therefore be it first resolved that the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1176, map of Angelo's Platt, the amount of $12,462, and establish an inspection fee of $997 and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $11,462.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko, I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting to Mr. Colado. Referring to the recommendations of the planning department, the, the first question that I have, well, it's kind of a general question or a statement. For the last 40 years, we've never, this planning board and its predecessors never enforced the cluster ordinance in the town with these small subdivisions. Mr. Flynn found the cluster ordinance, we didn't even know about it with respect to these small lots, but it is what it is, and I know the planning board follows the law. However, the suggestion that the planning department has to restrict 25 feet off the rear yard of each side of this two-lot subdivision, in other words, the middle boundary line between the two lots, they want 25 feet to be restricted, well, basically you can't do anything. And what's the reason? We have agricultural soil. The whole Long Island is agricultural soil, we all know that. But rather than make more of a big deal out of this than it should be, this board has the power to cluster and state in, in its decision, well, we're not gonna have 25 feet on each side, we have another alternative. You could actually have 10,000, 1,000 square feet, 500 square feet, as long as you comply. I know that Mr. Flynn's working on a new ordinance with respect to this technicality, whenever that happens, that'll be great. So the first thing I'd like to do is submit a map, a trace-over map that I did, as unprofessional as it is, I think will give the board some idea of what we propose as an alternative. Remembering that you could do whatever you want with respect to the amount of land that you preserve for agricultural purposes, bearing in mind that we're not gonna be planting on any, any of these parcels. So I've submitted to, to Mr. Markagi, which hopefully... Just for your perusal, what we suggest as an alternative to nothing, which I know this board is not gonna do, is five feet along the entire perimeter of the three sides of each lot except for the front, the front boundary line. If you look at the little legend I made at the top, what planning suggests comprises about 5,000 square feet. 25 feet by 100 feet on the back end of each lot would be, 2,500 times two would be 5,000. What I suggest actually is 5,206 square feet. We would get the same result. We're saving dirt, we can save dirt anywhere, it really doesn't matter. We're not talking about trees, mature trees, all we're talking about is some quirk in the law that says, okay, if you have agricultural soil, you ought to try and preserve it. Preserve it for what, I don't know, but again, the board has the power to do whatever it wants with respect to the amount of preservation it would like. And if you think about it, you know, what are we gonna do? It's dirt, it's not even trees that you're saving. It would eliminate that incursion of 25 feet to each parcel's backyard, which to me doesn't make any sense. So, our request is, if the board is gonna do anything to use our proposal, it's a little bit more square footage and it does the same thing, it saves agricultural soil. I think the other way is more of a punishment than an actual preservation. We use our backyards more than, obviously, we use our side yards. So to save the dirt on the side yards and five feet of the rear yard obtains the same result, and that's preservation of so-called agricultural soils. And the second thing I'd like to bring out to the board is, at the end, I think it's the last page, yeah, we're giving the town 15 feet on Hobson Avenue. Why? So that Hobson Avenue can be widened. That's fine, we're giving that, and then we need a variance because if we didn't give it, we wouldn't need a variance, but we're giving it, so now the board is now charging us $500 for the variance, which we shouldn't have to do in the first place. The board has the power to waive that. So, I'm asking the board respectfully to waive the 500. We didn't really have to give the, the 15 feet, although I believe the board has the power to say we want a dedication of 15 feet, we're willing to do it, but then to charge us the 500 seems to be a little bit onerous. So, and I know that's the board, the planning department's suggestion, not the board's at this point. So, those are the only two objections I have. Other than that, the two lots conform in every other way with the R-21 zoning. As I said, we lost the 15 by, 1,500 square feet, which if you put it on the 20,280, we get another 21,780 and comply with the ordinance. So, again, we ask the board, other than those two suggestions that we have, we have no objection to the planning department's suggestions.
So just so we can be clear, with respect to the buffer area in the back, instead of 21,780... of 25 feet in the back of each lot, you're proposing five feet along the back and the sides of each lot?
Yes.
And as far as the fee is concerned, you're saying that because you're dedicating 15 feet to the town, you now need a variance, only because you're dedicating that 15 feet, and then you're being charged $500 for the variance that you're getting because you're giving the property to the town?
Exactly.
This is not the first back-to-back subdivision that I voted on, and this is the first time that I see that there's some type of easement involved. There's no trees where this is now. In fact, there's a house that's to be demolished, so we're not preserving any trees or anything, just...
That's correct.
Ground. Now, on the other hand, your proposal is very creative. I think it's designed to circumvent the law, but Mr. Flynn, where are we standing as far as seeking amendment to this? Mr. Tramarko mentioned that you are in the process of working on something.
Yeah, I've worked on a draft. I spoke with different town board members, and they suggested that I wait until the new town board takes office in 2018 before proceeding.
That's only two weeks?
At this point, yes.
Would you be willing, you know, to wait? I don't see the necessary or the need for an easement, and I think we're just complying with a law that maybe that was not the legislative intent to begin with, so...
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think my client wants to get on with the approval process, which theoretically, if we had agreed with the Planning Department, maybe the board would have voted on it. If you think about it, our proposal is really the same as the Planning Department's proposal because they want to serve, save agricultural soil. We're doing that, so what's the difference? And it makes for a much better situation for the buyers of these two lots because they're going to have another 20 feet of backyard, and that's where everybody plays, in their backyard.
I mean, I agree with the concerns. I also agree with the fee and the easement, but, you know, the rear yard having the restriction, I mean, giving up the five feet around a fence, you can't really do five feet, you can't really do anything within five feet of your property line anyway, so it's only city offset, but I agree that, you know, I don't know if we have to wait until January, you know, for any sort of change to get that in play.
Well, Mr. Flynn, can I just ask you? Obviously, it's the department's recommendation to have the 25-feet restriction in the back of each lot. Is the reason for that solely to comply with the law, or is there any other reason why you would want that to be there?
Because you could still, I mean, according to this, I mean, you could mow it, lawn it, you can treat it as a backyard.
We have no objection to the alternative, we didn't know about it. We just recommended the 20 feet, or 25, 25 feet as an example, sure.
We can override that?
Of course, obviously, you can override whatever.
I think he just said that I don't have an objection to doing it to where the applicant wants.
I'm in agreement to the original way, without any five feet around the perimeter, without the 25 feet?
That, I think, would not be in compliance with the code.
That would go with five feet around.
The law requires that square footage...
So we can't override, okay, that's what I...
Sorry. I misunderstood.
Sorry.
You can override our recommendation, but I don't think you can override the code. So Mr. Tramarko's alternative, if we were aware of it, we probably would have recommended it.
So the square footage has to be preserved.
Yes.
Were we aware of it?
No, I just thought of it this afternoon.
All right, so what do we have to do to adopt his, do we need to rewrite this resolution?
Well, excuse me, before we even do it, I just had an idea, if this is possible. If we did do that, if we did do the five feet suggested by Mr. Tramarko around the perimeter, when, if and when the law is changed, does a client, the applicant, have the option of bringing that issue back up again?
Yeah, that, it's a good question, I was thinking about that. And if I could answer it in two parts. Number one, just because in January there'll be a new town board and the idea of an amendment will be considered, it may be quite a few weeks or months till they actually do something, and they might not do it. So just because everyone...
It's a process.
Yeah, and just because the people in this room seem to think that the existing requirement is irrelevant at this point in time on a piece of property like this, I don't want to second-guess the town board. They might think it's important, maybe they don't agree. So if I were the applicant and I were in a hurry, I might feel pressured to do something tonight as opposed to wait. The second thing is, is let's say they feel like they need to do something tonight, I think I'd have to ask Paul. I think as long as the map isn't filed, they can come back with a hearing and request an amendment of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
You'd have to make the motion at the conclusion of the hearing and then vote on the motion on a standalone basis. If that motion language were to be adopted, then it would become part of the resolution prior to a final vote on the entire resolution.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I think I can put into words, or maybe Mr. Earhart could. F would be, a five-foot-wide conservation easement shall be established along the three boundary lines of the subject lots, excluding the front boundary line of each lot. And then, no structures shall be permitted in the area, except fences, however, the property owners will be allowed to mow landscape and maintain the area. And we're done.
Or you could also say it's, the resolution as read says, instead of a 50-foot-wide conservation easement shall be established along the common property line, that would be a 10-foot with five on each side, and then five on the rear, on the side of each lot.
Right, you could do that.
Same result, right?
Probably easier, better.
If I could just interject, I mean, my experience in drafting legislation is that minor verbal amendments, you know, can be done with a reasonable degree of accommodation because people understand what the changes actually are, but when you're looking at a three-page resolution and you start to get into multiple sentences and, you know, run on thoughts, I think it's a little bit safer to have some written proposal submitted first, you know, have it reviewed by both the Planning Department and myself, and then, you know, get a comfort level that the language is precise and it's not contradicting something.
On the fly is always more risky.
Well, just postpone it to January 10th, they get their thing, and we move on.
I'm not 100% certain that I know what the final amendment is now, if that's going to be the language. You got back and forth.
The amendment is that he wants five feet along the back of each lot and five feet along the side of each lot.
Except in the front.
Except in the front. Well, I said the back and the side.
Right.
That's what he wants. Instead of 25 feet on the back of each lot, he wants five feet along the back of each lot and five feet along the, both sides of each lot. That's what he wants, but I understand your concern that when you're, when you're doing things on the fly, it's not as precise.
Yeah, it's a little bit dangerous. I mean, these are, land use is a serious matter, and, you know, words make a difference, words have meaning, and again, I mean, it's, I know it's like a stream of consciousness thought, it's not like he came over with a written proposal, you know, bracketing out the language you want to delete, underlining the language you want to add. That's the way you normally do revisions to legislation. I will admit that, you know, in my 40 years, we've had verbal amendments done on my watch, but we're talking about replacing a word or two, which everybody understood without any ambiguity. I think something like this, the burden's on the applicant to propose and submit the language that he or she wants to see and let it go through a review process.
I would agree with that.
Me too.
I don't agree with it, obviously.
That's why we have Paul here.
It's one simple paragraph. I don't know how we can make a mistake, but the board is the board, so, you know, I...
We have to listen to counsel.
The alternative is we take a shot at it now, and as counsel says, and I tend to agree with him, that on the fly is always risky, although it is quite somewhat of a simple thing, or the precise wording gets put into a revised memo that we read entirely or just to change part into the record the next meeting, and it's very clear.
I guess I have to agree with that, I don't know.
Well, could you please forward your thoughts in writing as to how you would...
I'll do it, yes, and I'll send it to...
All you have to do is reword that one paragraph, and then they can amend the memo and put that language through, and then you and they agree to it into the new memo, and then hopefully be voted on in January.
Do we also, what do we do about, do we address the $500 fee for the variance tonight? I would like to address that, either, sorry, either this meeting or the January 10th meeting, or do we put that in, take that out? If we're going to revise the memo, can we just take that out? How do we...
My suggestion is consult with counsel, your counsel, whether you have the right to waive the fee.
And then, you know what? Since it looks like it's going to be adjourned for the language of the restriction anyway, perhaps we could not do either of these things now, and then between now and the next meeting, we can consult with counsel as to whether we have the right to waive the fee, and then go from there. Just taking it out loud.
Not only does that make sense, there's also the issue of, you've got to do this thing sequentially because the variance is going to be the second step along the way because it's one of the conditions in order to get to the merits of the underlying application. So in all honesty, even if you didn't, you know, have clarity on whether or not you can waive it, you really have to wait so they're all in alignment for the final vote.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
January 10th?
January 10th.
Busy night.
Shall I move the motion?
Motion to recess.
Okay. In the matter of number 1176 Map of Angelo's Plat, I move that we recess the public hearing to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item, the public hearing is recessed. Do we need to table all these resolutions?
Do we need to table all the resolutions? Do we need to table each one, or can we make it a blanket? Table the resolutions.
Should we table these resolutions?
Yeah, you should. First, you recess the hearing, then table the resolutions. Table all three, table, three motions, but three table.
I can combine it, or do each one separately.
Each one separately, three separate tabling motions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. DiCannio came in after you called...
For Richards Homes?
Yeah, Richards Homes.
Okay, let us proceed with this, and then we'll address that.
Oh, great.
Just table the resolutions, and then we'll be done.
Get a whole bunch of them.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
You can just say same motion, same second, same vote, you have to get past the first one, just have three votes, that's the only point.
Okay, so make a motion to table.
Okay. In the matter of number 1176 Map of Angelo's Plat, I move that we table the, should I mention the secret declaration?
Yeah, it's the first one.
The secret declaration resolution, that we table that motion until the January 10, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second to tabling the resolution to that date.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the matter is tabled.
In the matter of number 1176 Map of Angelo's Plat, regarding the variance and table of modifications, I move that we recess the, that we table the resolution to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the resolution is tabled.
And in the map, in the matter of the final approval, in the matter of number 1176 Map of Angelo's Plat, I move that we table that motion to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the resolution is tabled.
And in the matter of the performance bond estimate?
Yep.
In the matter of the performance bond estimate for 1176 Map of Angelo's Plat, I move that we table the motion to the January 10, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the matter is tabled. I understand that a applicant has present who wishes to be heard. I guess before, before we address that, do we have the postings and everything is in order?
Yes.
Okay, so then I guess it would be appropriate to reconsider and lay these back on the table for a vote? So in the matter of 1120 Richards Homes St. James, their motion to reconsider, and so we can lay this on the table for a vote?
In the matter of number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I'm, is it reconsideration?
Yeah, make a motion to reconsider.
I make the motion that we reconsider the, the resolution for the...
Extension.
Extension.
Make a motion to, yeah, reconsider recessing the...
Could I ask you first? Before you reopen this, did you see anybody leave because it was recessed? Because if someone thought that you weren't going to hear it, and they walked out of the room...
The room is empty now, we don't really know the answer to that question.
Yeah, but I mean, did anybody notice someone get up and leave?
Yes, I, the room emptied out.
I meant when the board recessed this.
I didn't see anyone leave, I was making a note of who, why they were here, and I didn't see anyone leave on those two...
I think the only person left was the attorney on the first, everybody else stayed.
All right, so then motion to reconsider is in order, and is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, 1120 bond extension is back on the table, and...
As well as public improvements, the second one?
We could address that.
Address the bond first.
Could read the memo?
The request is to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as number 1120 Map of Richards Homes for a period of two years to expire on January 22, 2019. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the planning board on November 5, 2008. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $22,925 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The town board accepted the bond on January 22, 2009. The approved performance period, performance bond expired on January 22, 2017. The applicant indicated, the applicant has indicated that they need more time in order to complete the necessary improvements on the bond. One house has been completed, and the second house is under construction. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The planning department has no objection to the request. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Extension of Performance Period of the Performance Bond for Number 1120 Map of Richards Homes. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of the Caneo Management Court to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for number 1120 Map of Richards Homes for a period of two years. Now therefore be it first resolve that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as number 1120 Map of Richards Homes for a period of two years to expire on January 22, 2019.
Mr. DiCannio, I'd like to apologize to the board, I was here on time. I went to the senior citizen building, been going there for 15 years, and I noticed even on the application for Magnus and the planning board, it never said that this is where the new hearings are being held. So I apologize to the board, and thanks for hearing me tonight. I think the two requests are nominal in nature, we're just asking for an extension, we have a cash bond up, soon as the weather breaks, we'll put the monuments in, and the work will be completed. And as far as waiving of the sidewalks, there isn't any sidewalks throughout the entire grid pattern, nor is there on Lieutenant Olson. So I would appreciate if the board could...
Okay, you've heard the report of the planning department, and you are in agreement?
I'm in full agreement, yes, thank you.
Do we have a motion now to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is closed, and on the resolution for the extension?
In the matter of number 1120 Map of Richards Homes, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, resolution is adopted. On Rich, on the waiver request for the sidewalks, motion by myself to reconsider action on the sidewalk waiver request, so...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item is back on the table.
The applicant requests to waive 85 feet of sidewalk within the subdivision known as number 1120 Map of Richards Homes. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the planning board on November 5, 2008. The applicant was bonded for 85 feet of sidewalk on Cambon Avenue. The applicant indicates that there are no sidewalks in the surrounding neighborhood. The engineering and highway department... The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The planning department has no objection to the request for the following reasons. One, Cambon Avenue is a residential access street and has been identified by the planning department as a street that does not need sidewalks due to the low traffic volume. Two, there are no sidewalks on Cambon Avenue or any of the surrounding residential streets in the neighborhood. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank 2017, waiver request of the public improvements for number 1120, map of Richards Homes. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of the Caneo Management Corp. To waive 85 feet of sidewalk on Cambon Avenue within the subdivision known as number 1120, map of Richards Homes. Now therefore be it first resolved, the planning board hereby approves the request of the Caneo Management Corp. To waive 85 feet of sidewalk along Cambon Avenue within the subdivision known as number 1120, map of Richards Homes for the following reasons. One, Cambon Avenue is a residential access street and has been identified by the planning department as a street that does not need sidewalks due to the low traffic volume. Two, there are no sidewalks on Cambon Avenue or any of the surrounding residential streets in the neighborhood.
Heard the report of the planning department. Are you in agreement?
I'm in agreement, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number 1120, map of Richards Homes, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public hearing is closed, and on the resolution itself?
In the matter of number 1120, map of Richards Homes, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. I apologize again.
No problem.
Happy holidays.
Now, at this point, I am going to make a motion that the planning board-
Do you want to do the minutes real quick? November 1st?
You want to do the, okay.
It's up to you. I wasn't sure.
Sure. Go ahead.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the November 1st, 2017 meeting of this board.
Second by myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the minutes of November 1 are adopted. At this time, we, the board is going to move into executive session, and I'm going to make a motion for discussion of litigation regarding Foxwood Estates. Counsel want to further elaborate on the motion?
The motion should be to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the Foxwood Estates litigation against the planning board and approving the presence of Dave Flynn from planning, Matt Calado from planning, myself, Paul Savatino II, and my litigation co-counsel, Anton J. Boravina. And then we just need to be able to cut off the mics or go into another room. So we'll come back out afterwards and-
Okay.
-go back on the record, so the stenographer will have to stay till the conclusion of that.
That's fine. I saw move. I saw move.
Do I have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand in executive session.
No act will be taken. The attorneys have been given their instructions. We could go into litigation.
And we don't mention the case. We're not mentioning the case. It's not anybody's business. Right. Okay.
All right. We're back in session. The board has-
Give him a chance to-
Hold on, have his equipment.
You took, you had a nice break. I mean, come on.
You didn't hear me. My computer went dead. The battery died. It did.
It was on so long. Say, did he get it? What?
Banana, the banana people. Build absolutely nothing anywhere near anybody.[1689.33]